I'd like to call this meeting of the School District of History Lake Board of Trustees to order. First, we have regrets from trustee Olivera. And the standard reading about public participation with physical distancing has finally changed after two years. And this meeting can be attended in person. Trustees, staff, and public must still pre-screen before entering the board office. And the meeting will still be broadcast on Facebook Live. I'd like to start by acknowledging that we're signatories of Treaty Five. We reside in the traditional territory of the Nishtetseq. We're all Treaty people. Moving for, or can I have someone move for approval of the agenda, please?
Also, awesome.
Trustee Tucker, Vice Chair Tomaszewski, we have an amendment.
Can we table item 11.2 for Mitchell borrowing from circle and help them.
Do you agree with that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What?
Motion is passed. Moving on, can I have a mover for adoption of the minutes of the meeting of March eight? Trustees is?
One second.
Vice Chair Tomaszewski, any errors or omissions? All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is passed. And with that, we're into delegations. We have a presentation from Westwood School.
That's good, so I need to be a little closer to where I'm at here. And I apologize for my PowerPoint skills. It's not something that I do very often, so. Sandra Smith is here with me, so we're just gonna do this together. We didn't practice anything, we're just winging it. So, we wanted to share a project apart with you guys. I think we're the first school in Thompson to do this project. It's something that I've wanted to have the school, Westwood School, do for some time. We all know that Indigenous education's been an important part of School District of History Lake for a long time now, obviously. And I would say, well, especially since the calls to action, I mean, Westwood School's been trying to step up to the plate even more. Project of Heart was something that I felt fell into line with that quite nicely. And it's something that we kind of want to continue in our journey. As you guys know, a few years back, well, you may know, a few years back, Donna Johnston and a number of other people were going on trips overseas and, like Laurie Henderson went. And so when Donna came back from one of the trips, she put out a a challenge, I guess, to everybody in our, in the school, that she wanted the whole school to be doing what she called a water project. So everybody in the school had to do some sort of exercise of some sort of lesson, whatever it was, with regards to water. So all of the teachers, it didn't matter if you're a classroom teacher or a specialist or whatever, we all had to do something with regards to water and the importance of water. And so this was, that was sort of what I wanted to do with Project of Heart. It's sort of a school-wide initiative, and that was sort of our challenge. However, the pandemic interfered a little bit with that. So, just gonna take you through what Project of Heart is about. If I know, there we go. So it's an inquiry-based, hands-on, collaborative, intergenerational artistic journey of seeking truth about the history of Aboriginal people in Canada. Now, this information here I took right off the Project of Heart website, so this is not in my words, and I didn't credit this at the end of the So just so you know, I'm giving it credit now. The purpose is to examine the history and legacy of Indian residential schools in Canada and to seek the truth about that history, leading to the acknowledgement of the extent of loss of former students, their families, and communities, to commemorate the lives of the thousands of Indigenous children who died at the result of residential school experience, and call Canadians to action through social justice endeavors and to change our present and future history collectively. Wait, with the feather, yes. In acknowledging the loss suffered by Aboriginal children, families, and communities through the Indian residential school experience, we also gain an understanding of the strength, wisdom, and resilience of traditional peoples of this land. So the project seeks to expand the opportunities available for the wisdom of Aboriginal elders to be heard, recognized, and honored. And in doing that, we have to remember that this is part of the healing process for them as well. Change the attitudes and behaviors, hearts and minds, as elders give voice to language, values, traditions, and teachings that were suppressed by residential schooling. Inspire the building of relationships between Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal people in Canada based on a mutual understanding, respect, and collective action to create a different future. And that's really important for our students to learn, is that social justice piece. So this was the beginning of my introduction to Project of Heart. I can't remember what year it was, I think three or four years ago. It was the last We Day that they had. Now, We Day, I know, has become a little bit of a topic, but So that was Cheryl Steves and I took a group of Westwood students, along with other kids within the district, to We Day. That's the center picture there. And as part of that weekend adventure, Cheryl booked a number of different things for us to do. We went to WIG and we saw Indigenous collection of artwork and stuff like that there. And the other place that we went was to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada, which is housed in Winnipeg, which I think is very fortunate that, you know, we housed, like our Manitoba houses that. And so that, those pictures, the rest of those pictures are all from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And you can see on the right-hand side, there's the little tiles. And I actually meant to bring one with me, but I forgot. They're only about this big, like they're just like an inch tall and, or two inches tall maybe, an inch wide, if that, yeah. Little wooden tiles, and I like little things. And so I happened to notice these little wooden tiles with all the little pictures on them. And so I was asking about that, and that's how I found out about Project of Heart. So they gave me a bag of tiles and said, oh, you know, check into it and do that with your school. And so that's, yeah, that's what we're gonna come back and do. And then the pandemic struck. So it sort of put a damper on that for us. However, because Westwood, you know, is still embracing the calls to action, it's not like we weren't taking steps and, you know, building Indigenous education into our school community, anyway. So I, and this is kind of where Sandra's gonna step in, because Sandra did her last placement at Westwood last year. We were so lucky to have her. And Sandra is like a creative genius. Anyway, so I know that you had planned already on doing the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, right? That, you did that first. She did her placement in grade two. And so to take on, you know, Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls in grade two is quite a topic. I was a school counselor for 20 years, and I was a little worried about it, because I wasn't sure exactly how she was gonna take that task on. But if you look on the left-hand side, and I'll let Sandra speak to all of that, what she did with the kids was amazing and impacted the entire school, as you can see by that picture. And then the other pictures, Kamloops Residential School, and we all know about the 215 kids. And so that was another project that Sandra took on in her time.
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Sandra Smeaton. I'm originally from Baranjore First Nation, down south in Manitoba. Like Triff said, I did my last practicum in the grade-two classroom. And before I even stepped in the classroom, me and the teacher decided to do something to honor the Missing and Murdered Indigenous women in our country. So this is what we came up with. So I couldn't have done it without the teacher. She was amazing and very
She's another creative genius.
Very willing to try things that I thought out loud. So the thing that you see on the left is memorial or a honorable piece where we wrote on the feathers to honor a person or a woman in our life that we find, that we love, so we honored them. So we put mother, daughter, sister, aunt, friend. And the beads represent a woman who has been lost or missing or murdered. And we kind of just put our own creativity into them. So all the grade twos had freedom to how they wanted to put them. And at the end, we just added some red dresses to honor those women as well. And on the other side, as soon as we found out about the Kamloops thing, Amanda, the grade-two teacher, decided to do this as well. So we planned it. So seven-year-olds, they know a lot about what's going on in our country and a lot about, because it's starting to rise up and Truth and Reconciliation is starting to become more and more outspoken. So we kind of just jumped in it, found out what they knew, and just started building upon it. So it was very tearfully, and just, we just wanted to honor it. And it was a very special practicum that I did, which is why I stayed at Westwood.
We're very fortunate. Yeah, so, and you can see the feather, that art installation's going down the main hallway. The 220, or 15, the rocks, there are actually, there's 215 of them, correct? Yeah. That we sat, and it's all on a bed of fur. And that sat in the middle of the lobby when you first enter. And it sat there for basically till the end of the school year, I believe. So, yeah, it was pretty impressive, I must say. So then we're about to soar. The pandemic wasn't gonna stop us any longer. And so we had decided last year that this was gonna be the year we were gonna start Project of Heart, no matter why. And so there was a small committee of us formed, Amanda and C., Sandra, Smeaton, and Yeah, and Michelle Taylor, who's also a Westwood teacher. And so we sort of wanted to, we didn't want to burden the teachers, because already we're in a pandemic and there's a lot going on and a lot of changes. So we didn't want to burden them too much with, oh, here's another thing for you to do. So we wanted to have it as sort of as user-friendly as possible with some suggestions and ideas and kind of hold their hand along the way. And so this was, I believe this was also Sandra's idea of how to represent Orange Shirt Day. And it actually kind of turned into Orange Shirt Week. We've been celebrating Orange Shirt Day for quite some time at Westwood. But now it's, in the last year or two, it's been a full-school thing that we do. It was always just the one day, and this year it became a full week of events, I guess. So, yeah, this is just an example of what we did for And so there's handprints from everybody in the building on that big piece of cloth, and it still hangs in our main hallway. So the step one of Project of Heart is to investigation into history and legacy of Indian residential schools in Canada. And Orange Shirt Day is a really wonderful way to kick that off, because that's really a lot about what that has to do with, obviously. So I just have a number of different sort of art projects or different little activities that were done by various classrooms. There was, everybody in the school, like I said, is doing something. Not everybody takes the opportunity to take a picture of what they've done or whatever. So you'll see that there's not the full representation of everybody in the building, which would have been nice to have that, but it just doesn't always happen. So we've got a fairly nice cross-section of representation here. I actually just took these, these were still on the walls, so I went and took pictures of just some of these pictures. This was from Orange Shirt Day, like from that week, but they're still hanging on the walls in the junior high lobby, so. Oops. Oh, oh, I think I, oh, I did. How do I go back? Does, do I do that? Ask the person who just came out of university. And Sandra can speak to this one, because obviously it's submitted by her class.
So I get to teach grade three. The first thing that I did with my students is I just asked them what residential school was. And on the side there, what is residential school? I asked them to put their answers on a post-it, and they gave me multiple answers. A lot of their answers were, these are bad schools, kids were hurt in these schools, kids died in these schools, kids weren't allowed to speak their language, weren't allowed to practice their culture, their hair was cut. Oh, sorry. So after they're done that, we went a step further and we started researching so much more about what these schools were.
I mean, that speaks to the fact that our kids know already, right? Like, so this isn't just a brand-new lesson to them. It's just, this is grade two, and they already are very familiar with what residential schools are. And so that knowledge that they have already is wonderful, and so we just want to build on that.
Yes, after that, we created a more, and this is still in my classroom. I leave it up there for us to just remember and recognize. This is how much we know about it and how much we need to start learning about it. So it is an ongoing topic in my classroom. And my students are very free to talk about what they feel with this system. And sometimes our conversations go really deep, so. And they're very proud of what this has become.
Well, we know that nationwide, right? We know that there's still more grave sites to be found. And so this is gonna be an ongoing topic that impacts our students. So leaving it up, I think, is really important. This also was up all year since, oh, sorry, like submitted by Kindergartens. Oh, that drives me nuts. Noticed it right away? This was a bulletin board that was up in the main hallway, put up by Kindergarten. And I also have the PowerPoint that was made for the parents of this. So at the end, we can, we can show you that little PowerPoint. We can flick through it really quickly if you want to see the work that's on the board there that the Kindergartens came up with. But we left this up for the majority of the year. I think it's just recently come down.
No, it's still up there.
Is it still up? Okay. So some of the things that we were doing as a result of, or that fit in with step one, and it certainly not, it certainly not because of Project of Heart that we did math on the land camp, but it certainly fits in with Project of Heart, which a lot of the things that are happening naturally in the district do fit in. So it's worked out quite lovely. But our kindergarten in grade one students had a chance to attend Math on the Land. I don't know if you guys have heard about it or not. I would say the name, Kudusail, but I think I might be saying it wrong, so. But it was fabulous. I got to spend half a day out there. Sometimes I think, oh, I'm being paid to do this, like, look how fun. Anyway, so if I could take the opportunity to go do that for the day, I'm gonna do that. So, yeah, and it really fits right in with the kids speaking to elders, learning about Indigenous culture and background and ways of life. So, and just celebrating their own culture as well. So these are all some pictures from Math on the Land. And there's an elder that we all, a couple of elders that we all look up to, as well as Cookum. Little Cookum, she's become quite famous in the district. So they're moving into step two. And of course, there's a combination of all of these steps happening throughout the year. But classes choose an Indian residential school, learn about it, and then the original peoples on whose land it stands or stood, and their contributions to Canada and their own nation. So we have that large map of the world. I believe you are probably familiar with that. It was purchased, I believe, last year. And so one of the lessons in that map is on residential schools. So we took advantage of that and laid the map out in our multipurpose room for a week so that teachers could have an opportunity to do that particular lesson and become familiar with the map, because it's an excellent resource to have. So here's the grade-one, two-D class. And then the next one is one, two-D as well. So they wrote that they saw a giant map of Canada that shows where residential schools were. We used large pink pylon to mark Thompson and the smaller blocks to mark all the residential schools, so they were able to see them across Canada. Oh, and then, oh, yes, okay. And then she says, then we had a whole class discussion about where schools were, why they might be there. For example, there's more in southern Canada, because it's more populated, by bodies of water, because there used to be canoes to travel, or they used canoes to travel, and why there, why there were so many of them, et cetera. And Sandra's gonna speak to this one, her and Amanda at work again.
Another thing that we did is we got this book on the trapline, which is by David A. Robertson. And he talks about going on a trapline with his grandfather, or his father. And they're originally from Norway House, so. With step two, we had to pick a residential school that is by us. So we picked Norway House, and we picked this book to go by. So the first thing we wanted to know is, what is a trapline? What is, what do trappers do? So we decided to take two days, planned it out, and we bring some trappers in with the help of Loretta and her team. There's a whole background of team people that worked with us. So we took two days, and we learnt how to skin a rabbit. We learnt different parts of fur on an animal. We learnt that, different stories. What else? There's a whole bunch of things that we also did. So these are just some of the pictures.
Some of my stuff's cut off there. This was grade ones to fives, like so Sandra and Amanda basically put it out. Once this, it just sort of all of a sudden grew.
Yeah.
Really quickly.
It was a two-class thing, and it turned into a whole elementary area.
Yeah, in a couple of days. It was crazy, but it went off without a hitch and was pretty exciting. And so now they want to do this every year from the sounds of things. So David A. Robertson is a Winnipeg author, and we had him come zoom in with us last year during the height of the pandemic. I can't remember which book it was that he read to us last year and met with the whole school about. And it was around Orange Shirt Day that we did that. And so, yeah, they contacted him again, and so he went over this book with us. And so then we move on to, we love David A. Robertson at Westwood School. We love the fact he's local, in a sense, as well, right? And he's from northern Manitoba, so. So grade-one, two-D submitted that they had the opportunity to join in on the Zoom with David A. Robertson and listen to his experience and listen to him read about his book when we were alone. So that was another book that we did. You can see he's zooming in at the front of the class there on the TV. And so every school, every classroom in the school was invited to attend that as well. These were the teachings that three, or sorry, four-B learned from David. Kids are more powerful than we think they are. We have knowledge because we've learned about the past. We can help residential school survivors by donating money to charity. We can stand up for things that are not right or fair. We can spread our knowledge so that others learn about it and so that we don't repeat the mistakes. When you go on the land, it helps you to understand who you are. Reconciliation is more than just a healing, healing from trauma. It's about reuniting and working to understand each other and know about each other. It is sharing what we know. We need to respect the land because it provides for us. And if you lose your language, you can lose your culture. So this fit in with step one and step two, actually. And then we moved into step three, which was what had caught my attention toward Project of Heart from the beginning. So we finally got to put these tiles to use. And we're still in the process of that. Not all classes have finished this step of their journey. But this was grade seven, they were happy with their tiles. Four-D T shared with us that they completed their tiles in honor of the students of Crosslake Residential School. So we had sort of challenged each classroom to pick a school, and we just let them choose. They had different reasons for picking. Maybe one of the students was from that area, or because of, say, one of David's books or whatever. So these guys picked Crosslake. The students were very respectful and reverent in their reflections on their learning about the children of Crosslake School. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to teach my students about truth and reconciliation through Project of Heart. I'm looking forward to the next step, which is inviting a survivor to share their truth with us. And that was submitted by the teacher. And this is Sandra's students, hard at work, doing their tiles. Did you want to tell about the tiles a little bit with the
Sorry, go. The tiles represent a Oh, I blinked for a second, sorry. The tiles represent, we honor a student who has died or an Indigenous child who has died in residential school. So the black linings around the edges represent, honor one of those who have passed. And we drew something to honor another Indigenous person in residential school or part of residential school or who have died in residential school. So they were free to think of what they would like to draw. Some people draw a butterfly, and everybody has their own reasons to what, why they drew this particular picture.
In the end, with the tiles, we planned to construct some sort of mural of sorts, I guess, a kind of amalgamation of all of the tiles together. And then we'll keep that in our hall at Westwood for everybody to view. So this was step four, the survivor visit, and it says, we're still in the process of this. Some classrooms, we don't, we don't have really any pictures of this except for this one. And it's, it's Star and Lyle actually came to the grade-four classroom to talk about a book that they're reading called Sugar Falls. And if you haven't read that book, I recommend you read it. It's a really good book to read, based on Betty Ross's experience at that particular school. And so Star is from Crosslake, I believe, and that is why they kind of invited her in, because she got to share some of her experience and how residential school has impacted her life, so. So they read about the students who had died at the school and read each name out loud to honor their memory. They invited Star and Lyle to the classroom to teach about Betsy and her contributions to truth and reconciliation. And they learned about Indigenous ways of healing through prayer and smudging.
We also don't want, we do want to acknowledge that intergenerational trauma is a real thing. And that's why Star is up there, because she is intergenerational trauma in that process. So that's why we have her under the survivors' visit, because we want to honor and respect everybody's impact.
So step five is the social justice action piece. I posted Have a Heart Day. We acknowledged Have a Heart Day at Westwood this year on February 14th. But that doesn't mean that we, like, it was a sort of a last-minute thing we found out about. So it's like, we're just grasping at everything that's coming our way. And so with Have a Heart Day, they have letters and stuff already pre-written for students to basically just sign off on, supporting the rights of children, Indigenous children, and their right to a proper and safe educational experience, healthy educational experience. And so it's sort of lobbying the government about how that's necessary, and they need to put more effort into that happening. So we, even though we acknowledged Have a Heart Day on the 14th, we're still taking action. And so this is something that Sandra's class did with regards to taking action.
So part of the social justice, we did a letter. We wrote to the Prime Minister. And these are some examples of the letters that the students have read. So it's time to end drinking water advisories at First Nations. So some of the written letters just say, keep your promise, you lied, stop making excuses. It's time to stand up and provide water for everybody. Or it's not fair that we have water and people in First Nations do not. So we wrote a letter, mailed them out, and, yeah, that was our stand to justice.
It was just a recent mailing. So some of the people, we had some involvement with the specialists at the school board office here. And so Kelly Tate had come to one of our meetings with regards to math and heard what we were doing. And so she had recommended this spirit bear. She has a spirit bear herself. We actually have a bear at Westwood. We have to find out if it can be used as a spirit bear moving forward or not. But anyway, so we're still kind of learning about spirit bear. But May is May Math, is, we're celebrating Math Month. And we've got some people on staff, as well as Kelly and Ellen Dale, I believe, are the two people that are making crocheting hearts right now. And we're gonna start off with some math activities for the whole school to do with regards to estimation, graphing, that kind of stuff, using this assortment of hearts, so that we'll have enough crocheted. They're just little hearts, they're so cute. Different sizes, different colors. And the kids are, we're gonna be challenging all the classes to do a variety of math activities with the hearts. And then we are still in the process of deciding then what we're going to do with those hearts. There'll be enough for every child in the school, but we have some different ideas. I don't necessarily want to share them. Great story, I think. We have some ideas of what we're
But your staff does it.
No, Sandra and I, we just talked about some things, and, yeah. So, no, we want it to be a collaboration on the staff. We don't want it to So no, it, we want it to be a collaboration on the staff. We don't want it to, you know, so we will. The plan is for our next grade group meetings to talk about May Math Month, what we're gonna do with the hearts and, and then how we're going to, what we're gonna do with them moving forward, I guess. So, and but these books will obviously play, play a role. Um, so what I'm gathering about the book. Is the, the hearts are representative of the chi- the, the children, no. Where is it? Do you remember? The hearts are representative. We're just learning about this, so.
Of what you know of residential school. So as you pass the hearts, you have your.
You're sharing, you're sharing your story of what you know. So it's like the passing of, of education. So I just ended up, our PowerPoint with that lovely display that hangs in our. Um, I wanted to show you though another um. PowerPoint really quickly. I'll go through it quickly. I won't go through and explain because I know I'm a, okay, what is, where's my little mouse gone?
I don't know where the mouse is.
I don't know where the mouse went either. No, this isn't mine. This, yeah, the re- my laptop was having, and it's an Apple and it was having some. Yeah, it's just, I don't know, it's down here somewhere. Yeah, so I don't use one like this with, but it's obviously a little finicky. Yeah, the mouse just disappeared completely. Do you wanna sit down? There's a plan.
Well, it works on the screen there, see?
Yeah, it's, it's on the screen, it's just not, it's hiding. We'll do, I just wanna show you, this is uh. This was a PowerPoint, so this is what grade sixes did for their step two project. Um. This was a slideshow that a group of. Okay, so this is a group of three boys in grade six. And they're, what they learned about Norway, her, Norway House Residential School. So I'm gonna flick through it, I, because I know we're taking up a lot of your time, but I'll, so I'll flick through it really kind of quickly, but this is all of their work. I didn't wanna in- integrate it into my presentation because then it lost what they did, so. So what they learned about that particular school. Some facts that they learned, nuns making the kids wear all the same clothes, forcing them to sit, cutting their hair. Smiling for pictures. This is what they, when they were just first brought there. Had to sleep under covers because they had no blanket. Forced to eat moldy bread. So you can see the things that really kind of stuck with, with the children. Got sick because of the food that they ate. More about the food, rotten bread. So I think what happened was the teacher gave them kind of questions or uh topics and then they were supposed to sort of research. What they could about those different things, so what about the people? So it's just some sh- facts that they found out. I think I just flipped that a little too quick. There were the laborers. They did all the little visual effects too, which are kind of cool. And then honoring the names. But you can see the, the thought and the work that they put into that project, so obviously that's had an impact on them, so. Um, and if, I'm not sure how much time or if I'm completely out of, here we go again. Can't find the little house. Um. Uh, I could just quickly run through the kindergarten one if you wanted to see it, but. It doesn't have all the transitions that ha- this has, so it doesn't take, take as long to run through. Yeah, so this is, this was the one that was posted on the bulletin board in the, in the main hallway, it's still up there. And they. They, this is what they learned at On- Onshert Day, was that wonderful book that Phyllis wrote. I'm just gonna flip through it fairly quickly. But you get to a chance to look at the work, I like. See, seeing the sweet work that the children do. But look at her little face. And kindergartens went to map on the land. And that's all of the kindergartens that helped out with them. Yeah, sweet. Yeah, so that's where we're at. We're certainly not done our project. We've got a long way to go, but we wanted to share with you because we're pretty excited about it.
My next question is, in those three presentations we sent to Kelly, so they can be put on our school district website?
I didn't uh do any of the reference pages or anything like that, so that would be the only thing that I'd be concerned about with that, just because, I mean. It, it could probably be done. Because it was just the, I just got the information at the beginning from the Project of Heart, so that's easy enough. It's just the photos, because I'm supposed to copyright. Well, we wouldn't have any of those on here, just because we're bringing it to you, right, so. But yeah, I mean, we could certainly take some of it. Like the, we consider, I, I would don't, I don't know, are you wanting it as a PowerPoint or just some of the slides? Oh, you can probably put all the references in there.
Uh, just a comment on the spirit bear. It was a pretty nicely flashed off and I'm just a huge fan. I'm just a Canadian warrior and advocate for indigenous children. And just of all the social justice work you've done. I, I just, it's a mom, it just waltzing away. And we are waiting. I teach at a university level and I still do the class. So um, I, I think that's a good sign. I think that's a good thing because it brings our authentic selves, this to a terrible, terrible tragedy. And that was something that we have to, you know, kind of remember and carry with us move forward. But I really like the social justice pieces that you're moving forward with. That's all.
Yeah, and we do intend to each other to say, we just had, we got there yet, this is just, so yeah, and I think she. Actually has communications with her or whatever, so yeah, that's, that's on plan for sure. I think we've done a lot with David. Now maybe Cindy Kindior. And I think she is, is it three books or four of these spirit bear books?
She's a few.
Yeah, yeah.
So a lot of caption with the spirit bear concept.
Cause I guess to keep it moving, right, to keep it moving and, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I s- I wanna comment, I mean, I commend you for your courage. I mean, some of this content is quite heavy and I mean, your courage in being able to deliver that in an appropriate way to kids. Like some people would shy away simply because they would not deliver the programming.
Without it being, you know, extremely upsetting or whatever, but I, I have to commend you. You guys have done a fantastic job. I mean, you, obviously they know, they see things on the news, they hear their parents talking, all of those things, so. But yeah, just to be able to do it in a meaningful and age-appropriate way is not an easy thing to do, so I commend you for that.
I'd really like to echo that comment. I mean, people frequently really underestimate what children can do at a given age. But despite that, that was a pretty earthful job of bringing it down to earth, like down. Presenting it at their level. Uh, and I really liked how they, I really liked how the, the projects displayed in the quarter at Westwood, that looked great.
I think part of it too is that we, we recognize, and I've been in the district for close to thirty years and um, this has always been an important topic for me. But as a school counselor who used to bring, you know, indigenous people in for teachings and whatever. You always had your naysayers, or back in the day, you had your naysayers and you know, like enough. And I mean, obviously that dynamic has changed, like in, in more recent years, I'm going way back. But there's still, there's still that potential for some negative um. Oh, I know, I know the homeless shelter, I sit on the board of CMHA and, you know, I think we've come a long way with accepting the homeless shelter and helping the people. In that, in that building as well, but there's always your people that have the, the negative view or maybe just aren't ready yet. And so we're trying to take an approach where it's, it's a school-wide thing, so the expectation is that everybody needs to do something with it. But we don't want to, it, we, we want it to be a good and positive experience for everybody and. So walking down the corridor and seeing that or seeing some of the art displays and stuff like that, like it's just, it's kind of contagious. And so people are jumping on the bandwagon and, and, and celebrating. So it's becoming kind of uh an awareness and a celebration. But so there's individual learning happening and then whole group learning and I think that's, that's really important, so, yeah. We're keeping Sam. She's not going anywhere. She's getting arrested. Thank you.
Thank you ladies.
Yes, thank you.
This is good. Now we have courts completely spanning the room. No one's sneaking through here. So business from previous board meetings, we have none. Uh Superintendent of Human Resources and Policy report.
I provided you all with a great report. Again, I've been in a number of meetings throughout the last few weeks. Um, still. Primary topic of COVID. However, um, from some human resources and policy initiatives, I met with the um administrative. Procedure Review Committee and we reviewed uh seven procedures in section two A of the Human Resources Foundation component of the uh manual. Uh, any significant amendments that we discussed, we usually just bring forward at the leadership team meeting, just to let them know that they've been reviewed and if there's anything that's uh been updated. On March tenth, I facilitated a meeting with the school principals to review the new provincial guidelines for sus- for suspension and expulsions. Uh, the province requested that districts or divisions review the guidelines and provide feedback regarding recommendations. As well as identify any strengths and recommendations within the document. It was extremely tight turnaround. The document was upwards of thirty-three pages long. There are some significant changes with regards to um expulsion and suspension and the ideology around that and the use of them, so. Uh, that information was um submitted to the province on Mar- March fourteenth, so we will be hearing uh more about um. Policy development with regards to this area, I'm pretty confident. So, and that's all I have.
I'm just curious if the new provincial guidelines for suspension and expulsions involve any community or what community with faculty consultation?
Um, I believe that they came through the special services team. And then I know that uh the Canadian, or the coastal representatives, so, or the cap, the principals organizations within MTS had some. You, uh, MTS had some significant input, I think, too. Did you guys see the guidelines for the principal, or for the expulsions and. It, um, suspension guidelines? Yeah, yeah, coastal did, the, the Canadian, yeah, the association, the school leader, so would be did that. Um, yeah, so I know that this document's. Been out, or they've been working on it for quite some time. Um, I first saw it probably uh on like, say the. Seventh or eighth of March.
So they don't cause a fuss, is it controversial? Tell them.
I mean, I wouldn't say it's controversial, but it certainly, it, it has some implications of how we do business for sure and. And um, a lot of research components about, you know, uh, some of the negative impacts of suspensions and expulsions. And looking at alternatives to those things and when they're utilized and um all of those kinds of things. So yeah, there's some significant. I mean, there are um, th- there are processes within the public schools after the Editman Act about expulsions and suspensions. That we've kind of followed. Um, this goes into more of the research component about, yeah. About, you know, the, the detriment of expelling kids from school and some of the things that have happened during expulsions and, and uh trying to do other alternatives to them.
Yeah, I know.
So.
I really look forward to seeing that one.
It's a, it's, it's a significant document, yeah.
Any thoughts on implementation?
Time line?
Uh, no, I got, I, like I said, I think they're just in the process right now of uh gathering some feedback and getting. So essentially the doc- the document was broken up into about, oh, it would have been within twenty to twenty-five guidelines on different areas. One was processes for expulsion, one had an introduction, there was a big research component. So which in, within each of the guidelines, we were tasked. With uh going through the guideline and then providing feedback with regards to things that we believed were strengths within that. And then some recommendations or some things that uh, that we wanted clarity on or believed would be difficult from uh like. Uh, operational standpoint, right? Um, like what are our alternatives?
Right.
You know, when you have situations where kids are being expelled or suspended from s- from school, what would be some alternatives other to those things? Particularly when you're looking at safety, like safety of other students, safety of staff, all of those kind of things, so. There were some questions.
I know it's been an issue for a long time. It's always an election issue. Parents are, are, are um, like talking about suspensions or expulsions somehow. Well, I mean, it's been my experience and it's always been an election issue in terms of what can the school do differently. So this is all I'm coming, I look forward to. Seeing.
Yes.
I mean, and it's always that component. I mean, I, I was a s- school principal for a lot of time.
I mean, you, you like to think you're doing the right thing and the just thing and um, you know. It's, it's, it's very much like the court system, you try your best and sometimes, you know, I mean, not everybody. We believe gets their ju- justice in the court system and when you're at a school principal and you're metting out in disciplinary fashion, you. You try to do what's fair and what's best and sometimes people aren't in agreeance with those decisions.
For sure.
Yeah, so. And I mean, you gotta look at both things, best for kids on both of our hands, right?
On the context.
Yes.
Yeah. Interesting.
Um, thank you. And with that, I'd like to apologize, the, we should have said we also have regrets from Superintendent Henderson. Um, and because of that, we also don't have a educational services and program meeting report.
Yeah, she said she would bring, she would have her project.
Uh, Secretary of Treasury's report.
Circulated within your board packages, uh, the expenditures as of March seventeenth or this year. As of March seventeenth, we're sixty-four point five percent through the school year. Um, expenses year to date at this time, uh, twenty-six million, three hundred thirty. Um, expenses year-to-date at this time, uh, twenty-six million, three hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars. So that is fifty-nine point nine percent of plan, so we're tracking well. Uh, we also have upcoming our COLA adjustments, so we uh, received the COLA amount for, and we're able to average for the year. We have to go back to the beginning of the year, July for support staff, September for teachers, and provide that back pay, that will total four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Uh, we will be paying that out on the March thirtieth teacher pay and the April first support pay. And that will bring our expenditures to sixty-one percent of plan, so we're still tracking well for the expenditures. Within your dashboard that was circulated, the uh, safe mil- uh, safe schools funding, the forty million dollars of which the district is getting six hundred and nine thousand. We, at this time, we have year-to-date expenditures of three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars. Uh, the majority, well, almost all of that is due to the sub-teachers that are assigned in the schools. And that so far is three hundred twelve thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars. We've also have the five million dollar learning recovery fund from the province. The school district received eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars for that initiative. And we are utilizing that for numeracy resource, and we've spent sixty thousand, three hundred and three dollars so far on one of the additional numeracy resource positions. Our COVID-related funds that were not included in our plan for technology and some minor equipment supplies, uh, we have those reported. We also have our day cleaners of three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. So right now, at this time, our total COVID is three hundred forty-two thousand, three twenty-three. The wage agreements cost pressures, one point three million dollars that we received extra from the province this year. Our budget, we're anticipating at the end of the year to be slightly over this amount, one million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at this time. Uh, so the shortfall of a hundred thousand will will have to come from within. Looking at our operating surplus, we had the opening balance of two point five million dollars. We did receive the reduced revenue of education property tax credit of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Our in-year funding adjustment reduced our current year funding, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. We have a benefit cost increase that we have to absorb of twenty-three percent that was not in the plan of a hundred and sixty thousand. And at this time, we have the Juniper Elementary gravel roof repair of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. The province has advised us, we have not received, or will not be receiving funding for that repair, so that will come from our surplus funds. At this time, we're projecting our June thirtieth surplus to be one million, two hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. Uh, what, it is below the provincial limit of one million, one point eight million dollars. Uh, that's all I have right now, and a third question. Yeah, but we have a estimate right now of a hundred and sixty-five thousand for the roof repair. Once we do have the spring thaw and are able to get up there and open it and see the exact extent of repairs, but it will all come from surplus. We do have, uh, coming forward in the next couple of weeks within our capital plan, um, some additional roof projects, it's been in the capital plan for many, many years, so hopefully it gets more attention now that we're having to put a lot of money into repairing.
Any other questions?
Under new business, summer hours. So, approval is required for modification of the school board's hours of operation from Monday, July fourth, twenty twenty-two to Friday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, to accommodate a four-day work week during the summer. Recommendation is that approval for working hours from Monday, July fourth, twenty twenty-two to Friday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two be approved as for USW eight-two-two-three-dash-thirteen maintenance, Monday to Thursday, seven AM to twelve noon, twelve-thirty to five-thirty PM. And for eight-two-two-three-dash-zero-zero support, Monday to Thursday, eight, seven-fifteen AM to twelve noon, twelve-thirty PM to four-thirty PM. Can I get a mover, please? Trustee Grips, trustee Anderson, any questions? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, trustee Tucker.
Um, just wondering if this is something that happens every year, and I've never noticed.
It does.
It does?
It hasn't occurred a lot.
Well, didn't, yeah, didn't happen during, yeah, didn't happen during COVID.
This is the first time I've seen it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we definitely did the last summer, but it was called a first story. Oh, we didn't.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have a mover in a second here. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Questions carried. Office of Drinking Water. Let me just read this, or just, okay. So our facilities manager has confirmed that four school sites, uh, sorry, we should start by saying that are, the drinking water in the schools was tested for lead, this is part of a province-wide initiative, and yeah, so attached to our package, there's a report detailing what the levels are, not what the levels were, but whether there were exceedances in each of the schools. Uh, in four cases, there were exceedances. And our facilities manager has confirmed that the four school sites with elevated results during the first testing were the results of stagnant water in the system. And corrective action required the four sites retest with increased, this is with increased system, I think. Yeah, with increased flows. And the second test results found all were within the acceptable thresholds, and a copy of the str- of the sampling report is included, trustee Anderson?
My only question is what triggered this, and is it because of the schools being older in age? And the pipes would be older?
And this, this was a provincial initiative through all of the states.
Were, were all of these from refrigerated drinking fountains, or not?
No, uh, they weren't all the same fountains, these are part of the older areas of the schools, so that the original constructions of the schools. We first sent our sampling into the Office of Drinking Water. What they've come back with is they will be posting on their website for all school divisions, the tables, so you will see the school and whether they had elevated results or not. So we have four schools that had elevated results. But it is also noted correction action has been taken. That's the only information that's going to appear on the website, so. Is corrective action meaning replacing drinking fountains, or or what was required, like there's different levels? So with our testing, it was just that there was not enough ample water flow. Once, when you have water sitting in the pipes, it will, it will fly your test results. So we, we did a a flow, increased the flow through the system, and our, all of our tests are fine. Um, included in your package is the actual lab test results that came back and were well below the allowable limits.
Awesome.
Sorry, did this testing being done, or is it today?
I bel- no, it's not every year, it's um. It's been, I think it's every two or three years that it comes through, um, it's definitely been more in the media lately.
Yeah, but I mean, I can remember, it must have been the city who did it though, but because they, they would come in all the time to test the waters at all the schools, and they would just, they'd alternate sites, like when I was a school principal, they'd say, we gotta take it from here, or we have to take it from there. But I always thought that was a city initiative at that time.
In this, this Office of the Drinking Water, um, it's a prevent, more of a provincial focus. But um, it was, it's the same with our ventilation and those types of initiatives that are coming through at the provincial level. But I believe it's every two or three years, or we'll be able to confirm how often it's a widespread testing.
Are we even using drinking fountains?
We're using water bottle stations, which is all, they're still the same fountains.
No, we've opened up drinking fountains.
But the.
Like actual drinking fountains, like the, yeah, they were shut down, yeah, yeah, they were shut down after COVID.
At the time. They were shut down. They're open now, but at this time, when they were testing, there was no drinking fountain, but it's the same piping that's used for the water bottle station.
Yeah, but the building I used to work in, when it was tested years ago, the the fountains were all in refrigerated drinking.
Fountains, where it's like a radiator, and so there's a lot of solder in it, and if no one uses it, it just sits. And that, that was the biggest problem, is if no one uses it, it just builds up.
Orders, so there, there is the regular maintenance routine of after um, spring break, after Christmas break, after summer break, all of the ones are flushed and and flow through, but.
You, you would have had stagnant water too, because we weren't dr- using drinking fountains for the longest time, they were actually just.
Yeah, I mean, with reduced gym classes and kids in cohorts, and even reducing the number of kids in schools. There could have been a variety of factors, but.
So makes perfect sense. Okay.
So does my mom, my mom too. Yeah.
It has come in, and was it going to be published at, with the Office of the Drinking Water, we wanted to bring it to the trustee detention then. We did have elevated results, but they won't result.
Awesome.
Test.
For sure, for sure. Absolutely.
Correspondence, uh, National School Board Association, uh, their, their regular e-bulletin is attached to the board package, it's available for anyone who wants to look at it. And to the Canadian School Board Association, there is a call for presentations for the upcoming convention. Is it just for the convention, or is it also for the, it's also for the gathering on Indigenous education, yes? With that, committee reports, uh, policy committee, trustee Anderson. Education and programming, programming committee, trustees. Public relations committee, vice chair Tom Shesky.
We have a date set for April. I guess so, yes.
Really soon in April.
Yes.
And finance, property and personnel committee, trustee Grips.
We have a meeting scheduled on Tuesday, April the twelfth, at five forty-five.
And with that, trustee comments, uh, trustee Tucker.
Yay.
I gotta, I can't, I can't make it, can't go to the same side of the table every time, that's unfair.
So this, um, I, I just really enjoyed the presentation, and I really liked the notion of um, uh, students being educated very young, because our, the hope for a better future for us is for our students, right? And I like the idea of being gently educated from a very young age.
Like that knowledge and understanding, young will, will permit, like it will.
Absolutely, and I think for parents, I'm I'm sure that, you know, this generation is going to do it. And also, I just wanted to talk about, um, just throwing another, a public service announcement. Um, my fellow's class is presenting a film on toxic masculinity. It's doing a screening that's called The Masked Women, it's an awesome, awesome film on just some of the things that impact young men, and create environments where they're uncomfortable, and who knows are uncomfortable, so it's just kind of the toxicity of that then, like, you know, what we carry too far in terms of masculinity. And it's on April the tenth, it's a Sunday, it's at one o'clock, and um, camera only because we have limited seating.
Where, at the school?
Sorry, no, it's at, at the Johnson Regional Community Center in the multi-partners, right?
Oh, T R C C.
Yeah.
What's the date again, April?
April tenth, and we are providing transportation and childcare.
Ooh.
So, um, if you need any more information on that, I don't have the poster in front of me, but you can call me at six seven nine five one eight eight. And snacks. And that's all I have to say.
Vice chair Tom Shesky.
I'd like to echo a little bit of trustee Tucker, a big thank you to Trish and Sandra for their presentation, it was very emotional. And really touched the heart, it's nice to see that we're bringing this stuff into school. And our students are well knowledgeable in what's happening. Wapana Community School had their mini winter fest last week, uh, loved seeing the pictures on our Facebook page. Western School is doing a Curtis Easter chocolate sale, check it out on our Facebook page for more info, last day to order is tomorrow, March twenty-third. Kelly, I'll give you my notes. Uh, last week, Juniper School did a walk for Ukraine, they had a cupcake and sunflower pin sale. The seven, eight P students and teachers donated twenty-six dollars each to do a fifty-eight kilometer virtual walking challenge around Kiev. They had twenty-six participants, including nineteen students and seven teachers. This week, Equal Riverside is having their Spirit Week, Monday, they were, Monday was where the same color, Tuesday was backwards day. Wednesday is costume day, Thursday is summer day, Friday is pajama day. Dillard's School is also celebrating Spirit Week, Monday was Jersey Day, Tuesday was time machine day, that would be kind of interesting. Wednesday is beach day, Thursday is rock star day, and Friday is PJ day. And I want to say, uh, great job to our art and perker athletes who attended the basketball provincials last week. And last but not least, uh, Friday report cards will be out, and Friday's the last day before spring break, hope everyone has a safe and fun, relaxing spring break. That's all I have.
I think you're wrong.
You know, I love their Facebook pages, because I always like check them out and like to uh, bring it to everyone at times, yeah.
Trustee assesses.
Okay, I have also a few items, first of all, after two years, we all are here without a mask, so I hope in the country, we are safe and very great. And last week, I think there was some accident near our apartment school, so please try to stay because the weather is bad. And some students do not care, they just brought their. And I have seen the board, a few teachers have completed their twenty or thirty years of their services, so well done and congratulations. And it was really a nice presentation, thank you.
Trustee Anderson?
Uh, I would just like to go everyone else and say we was successful, a beautiful presentation. Also, Jessica Lewis and Lois Carney have a large collection of used gowns for prom or grad- graduation. And they'd like to give them out to students who need them, so if you need a gown for prom or graduation, you can schedule an appointment, an appointment with either of those two beautiful ladies, they have dresses and accessories to give to anyone who calls them, their phone number is two zero four six seven nine zero nine three five. And that's all.
Trustee Grips?
Um, I'd like to thank Kelly, uh, not, our secretary and treasurer for her tireless work on violence over budget. Giving the fact lots of times, we didn't have the data from the province on time, so it's quite challenging, but um, she always have a, always has a smiling face and get it done, so great job.
She always have a, always has a smiling face and get it done, so great job.
Some of which were badly damaged. And I'd just like to say with public health orders no longer in place for schools, congratulations to all our students, family and staff for two long years of making it work. And hopefully this is the beginning of the end. With that, questions from the public, a lot, I didn't pertain to the agenda.
Lot of pressure.
What's the comment?
Sure.
I just want to make this statistic for, um, working together with everyone to do a project to, because we did it together and. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, you guys in the schools did most of the work. Tremendous job, those teachers and principals of those schools, keeping kids safe and keeping them in line and making them have a bathroom and making sure things are clean, like it. They, they did a phenomenal job and, uh, quite frankly, I know that, uh. Our incidence of, uh, water, widespread COVID in schools was not, basically, we never had huge outbreaks and that's. Bit of all their hard work and dedication and planning and organizing and pivoting from. You know, going from orange to red to all those things, yeah, they handle it like trippers, so I, I really commend all of them.
Yeah, I still think, I still think one of the most amazing things was achieving social distancing within the existing facilities we have. Like, I only got inside a couple of schools, but I think we've each been to different schools and it was. There was a different effort made at almost every place just to take advantage of what terrain existed within the school, but it was quite the effort.
Yeah, not always comfortable, some schools are, you know, they'll, had their facility used in a facility, one of others did, but, I mean, they made it work. It, it was disruptive, there was absolutely no doubt.
Two years and we finally sent a basketball team somewhere. And with that, can I get a motion to moving camera, please? Vice Chair Tom Shesky, trustees. Make it about five minutes. All those in favor? Aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Cap.